Dear God, as our second United States President John Adams said, let us admire and adore the Author of the telescopic universe. Love and esteem His work. Do all in Your power to lessen ill and increase good. We pray that we have grace to face the challenges of our community, and we pray for our community members that Your Spirit shines on each of them. Above all, we ask that in our words, deeds, and actions we lessen ill and increase good. We pray this to You, God. Amen.
Amen.
Let the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting.
Pollers.
President.
Allen.
President.
Paulson. Joe.
Here.
Dan Peter.
President.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Mealy.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Young.
Present.
Paulson.
Here.
Go in corner.
This is to item three, adoption of the agenda. Second.
I know something here at the very end. Apologies. Under item eighteen, closed session, negotiated contract should have a notation of section six, ten, oh, two, one, sub twelve. And so I would request that the agenda be amended to reflect that notation. And then we need to be included as part of the motion.
So I make a motion to prove the agenda is amended.
Second.
Oh, I see.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. And a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item four, misleading to agenda items. We get the privilege of recognizing one of our community leaders, Mr. Richard Sheets, who has decided to retire. Richard, if you want to come up, I've got a proclamation for you. But we'll open the floor if you have any comments you want to make, any advice, anything you'd like to volunteer for, we can get you on a committee or commission.
Well, you know, that's always a truth. Well, you know, this is really an honor, I mean, for a lot of reasons. But it's really an honor because the respect and high regard I hold you and your colleagues around the state. Because I firmly believe that it's the local government that makes the country strong and great. You do the hard work. The heavy lifting happens here. And it's been a pleasure for the last forty-five years to assist you that any way I can. It's been, you know, you don't work someplace for forty-five years and not enjoy the people that you work for, and it's been a pleasure. And this may be good news or bad news. I'm not going away completely. You're gonna still see me at the Capitol doing a little work around the halls, but I will be here on a day-to-day basis. But it's a great pleasure. And I couldn't do that without my wife Patty. You know, she gives me really grounded, after coming back home at late at night to Capitol, she brings you back to earth real fast. And I also like to introduce the person who's gonna take my position, Executive Director Laura Holloway. She'll start.
Start over there.
She's gotta be that way when you're executive, you gotta move her out real quick in this job. But Laura's gonna take over October first as Executive Director, and please give her the support that you all have given me over the years. And just thank you, and thank you for what you do, and thank you.
I've had the privilege of working with you. And I know when they're in session, you are always there, and Shannon's there, and Laura's there. I mean, you've got a good team, and you take good care of the cities, so.
It's been a pleasure.
Appreciate all you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's exciting. But we do have a proclamation, so I'm gonna read it for you. You'll indulge, and then I'll come around and we'll do a real quick picture. And you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to enjoy this beautiful weather. Proclamation says, whereas Richard Sheets has devoted an extraordinary forty-five years of service to the Missouri Municipal League, nearly five decades of strengthening local and state government across Missouri, and whereas Richard began his public service career with the Green County Planning and Zoning Office, an office of Governor Joseph T. Stale, before embarking on a remarkable journey with the Missouri Municipal League. And whereas throughout his tenure, Richard has been a tireless advocate for Missouri cities, championing the values of local governance, empowering municipal leaders, and ensuring that the voices of communities, large and small, are heard and respected. And whereas his work has not only advanced policy, but has also built bridges between communities, fostered collaboration, and inspired a culture of civic responsibility and excellence. And whereas Richard's relentless dedication, strategic insight, unwavering integrity have earned him the admiration of colleagues, elected officials, and community leaders across the state. And whereas his advocacy has helped shape stronger, more resilient communities, and his legacy will continue to influence generations of public servants. Now therefore, I, Ron Fitzwater, Mayor of City of Jefferson, do hereby recognize and honor Richard Sheets on August fourth, twenty twenty-five, for his outstanding contributions to the Missouri Municipal League, the City of Jefferson, and to the people of Missouri. His legacy of service, advocacy, and leadership stand as a beacon of excellence and as a model for all who've served the public good. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to have anybody you'd like to come up and join you. We'll get counsel around back.
One, two, three. I'm gonna give you one more. One, two, three.
I'll see you over to Capitol.
Yeah, I'll see you over there eighty-five.
Yeah, that's always a fun part of the agenda. We will move on. Did not have anybody signed up under item five for all the comment. Public hearings, item six A, has been pushed to a future meeting. Item seven, appointments by the mayor, none at this meeting. This is to presentations from consultants and invited guests. Item eight A, financial update. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reports that you have in your packet are the reports that were presented at the end of July to the Finance Committee. First page in the reporting is for the sales tax revenues. The collections that we received at the beginning of July came in about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars under projections for the general fund. That means year-to-date in the general fund, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars under projections. Capital improvement tax and also the half-cent park sales tax came in just over ninety-six thousand dollars under projections. Both of those are just at two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars overall year-to-date under projections. And the public safety tax is under projection four-thousand, forty-one-thousand-five-hundred for this timeframe. Total year-to-date, one-hundred-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. We are continuing to monitor those collections. As we talked about in the Finance Committee, it is likely that if there are shortages out of the general fund, we're hoping to be able to cover those with increased revenues in other areas. Capital improvements, we will have to have a conversation to kind of reallocate or determine how we're going to allocate that shortage. And parks would typically deal with any shortage out of their fund balance or by reducing any expenditures they have for the remainder of the year. And public safety tax, it essentially is a one-time transfer at the beginning of every fiscal year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions there. Just know that we are continuing to monitor that situation. Next report in the packet on page six is going to be the revenue model. Here with the sales tax, you see the under collections, under budget of two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. But you can also see that the other categories within the revenue model are coming in and projected to be above the budget that we have for twenty-five. So hopefully, we again will be able to cover that shortage in the sales and use tax. If you go on to the next two pages, it's actually breaking down each of those categories into the individual accounts. And while there are some areas or some individual accounts that are under budget, you can see that there are also others that are over budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions with that report. Next report is the estimated fund balance for ending fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This is the same report that you've been presented for many months since we had the audit finalized. Seventeen percent. We are above the seventeen percent required balance by nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars. And nothing that I'm aware of at this point has changed that. The next page that's in your packet relates to the self-funded health insurance. We've talked several times about where we stand right now. So this page actually reflects where we are with cash. This is what I know about as far as monies that we have gotten in, and also any payments that have been made to service providers. And this was as of the end of July when I pulled this information. You can see that based on the information that I have here, the unaudited cash amount that I have right now is eight-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven dollars. You will also recall, the same time last year, we were already aware of the fact that we were going to have a shortfall in the self-funded health insurance. So at this point, we do not have that situation. But I would like to point out that one of the areas of concern right now has to do with the fact that MU, Anthem have now signed an agreement, and that agreement is actually retroactive back to the beginning of the year. And so any services that were provided from MU that our employees or our self-funded insurance would have paid for at that time, we could have an increase here in claims that come through just based on information back retroactive. So Paul, what, I mean, Paul has been communicating with McGriff and.
Yeah, you know, McGriff is our broker, and they've been great through this, too. This, you know, this is an unprecedented situation, what went on this year with NU Health and Anthem. I mean, nobody has really any past experience to rely on a similar situation. You know, one of the things, which by the way, we actually learned through this process, that the City of Jefferson is the thirteenth highest utilizer of MU Health in the Anthem Network, which was a surprise to us, but they care a lot about our input as we go with that. But what we're seeing right now is the projection that was at the beginning of the year for somewhere around six, just shy of six-point-four million was our total projected expenses in our health plan. Right now, the adjusted projections coming in about five-and-a-half million dollars. So about nine-hundred thousand under what was projected at the beginning of the year. So that's why, you know, we're seeing, you know, cash balance here in the positive. However, what we don't know is how people behaved during the three months that MU was out of network. And, you know, we know anecdotally what some people did. We know that a lot of people went to other providers. But we know that a lot of people just didn't go to any providers. You know, at the beginning, everyone thought, just as we did, just as our broker did, that the dispute would last maybe a week, two weeks, based on past precedent. That was the norm. You know, we had a similar situation with JCMG with Anthem a couple of years ago, and everyone knew that got resolved like within weeks after they came out of the network. So it was a shock to really everybody that this went on for three, four months. So that constantly informed how people behaved. Whether or not that was, I'm gonna keep waiting for my provider to be in the network, I'm gonna go ahead and go to my provider and pay out of pocket, or I'm gonna go to a new provider, or I'm just not gonna go anywhere at all. And now that they're back in network, and now that it's retroactive, which we are yet to even get instructions on how they're going to handle retroactive claims. Again, unprecedented situation, and Anthem's gonna have to figure that out. But we have no idea how many people went, how many people are going to have retroactive claims filed, how many people are gonna start going, you know, and catching up now. So, you know, we just don't know. But our broker, McGriff, they've been tremendous. They stay, they keep their ear very close to the ground on this stuff, and they keep us well informed. So we're just gonna be watching from here to the end of the year to see where this leaves us. So this is good news, but, you know, I think it's important to know that we have an unprecedented situation. We don't know what's gonna take place over the next couple of months. And with healthcare, really, you know, the claim year ends October thirty-first, but then, you know, we continue to settle claims well into next spring before that's finally closed. So we won't really know what the whole picture is until we get further. But if there's anything, and there's, you know, the slide deck from McGriff with the updates on the costs are there. If you have any questions, let us know. We can track those down. I think all of us are far from experts on these details, but McGriff will be great about getting back to us with information if we need it.
Councilman Tom.
Basically, what you're saying is don't get excited about the nine-hundred thousand.
Correct.
That is what I'm saying, yes. Surplus.
Be cautious.
Yes. That makes sense. And I have a kind of a stupid question. One of the items here lists subscribers and then members. What's a subscriber, what's a member?
I, I may have to get back to you, Councilman, but I believe that the subscriber includes the dependents. That's, you know, so a member would be the employee. They're the member. Their child is a dependent that is also on the plan, and they would be an additional subscriber. So we could have one member with multiple subscribers.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update and all that. Is, when there is a time when McGriff sends you, starts saying, okay, we've got with Anthem, and we are going to start processing claims, just as a heads-up for the city council, hey, we heard back that, you know, they're going to start, because you said you didn't know what that would all take, just any, you started processing so that it would be on our radar, that we may be seeing some numbers fluctuate and all that. If there's something that you all see out of whack, then that would come back before, so.
Absolutely.
So my expectation would be at this point, we are paying claims out on a weekly basis, which is what we always do. But my expectation would be from this point forward, we start to include this now as part of the update that we provide to council at this time, just so everyone's on the same page and can kind of monitor where we're at. Thank you.
Councilman Lester.
I just want to say I appreciate the data from McGriff. The kind of thing I think a number of us have been looking for. And so is this, this information that we're getting from McGriff, is that gonna be updated regularly?
I think we could probably ask for that on a monthly basis as well at the same time that we do prepare these documents for this council meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. This is to item eight B. Susan Cook, Capital City Housing Task Force. Welcome, if you would just introduce yourself for our folks at home.
Sure. So my name is Susan Cook. I am the Chair of the Capital City Housing Task Force, as well as the Director for River City Habitat for Humanity here in town. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Housing Strategy Consultant. And I want to give you a little bit of background because this has been going on for a lot of years. So back in two thousand and nineteen, when the tornado hit, I was serving on the Long-Term Recovery Committee that the United Way was kind of heading, and they asked me to be the Chair of the Housing Subcommittee. And as the pandemic entered the picture, that housing needs became more than just disaster recovery. It became more of a community issue, broader issues. So the task force was created out of that, the Capital City Housing Task Force. Since then, we've worked on numerous issues, from application fees to other things. But in two thousand and twenty-three, I applied for a program with the New York Furman Center, which the Housing Solution Labs ran. And Jeff City was selected as one of the five cities in the nation to participate in an online workshop about housing strategies. And so myself, Ann Bax, Councilman Lester, Clint Smith, Rachel Sinze, Eric Barron, and Ann Bax participated in that program for about a month. And at the end of it, we all pretty much said the same thing. We need a housing strategy for Jeff City. But none of us had the capacity at the time to really create it and work on it. So the following spring, the task force held our annual housing conference, and we invited the New York Furman Center experts to come down and talk to us about housing. And so they presented at the conference. And then we held a special workshop the next day for about thirty city leaders and county leaders, where we talked about housing. And we talked to the housing experts about what do we do in Jeff City with this housing crisis? And so through that discussion, again, it was determined we really need a housing strategy for Jeff City. And so the city staff mentioned that they had some disaster funds left over from the tornado, which they will tell you about in more depth here in a minute. But they could only be used for planning or administrative needs. And so the task force got together, and with the city staff, we wrote an RFP for a Housing Strategy Consultant to really come and help us. Because what we really need, we have a lot of housing groups in town that are working on things. But I'm not sure we're all rowing in the same direction, right? Especially after the tornado, there was just a lot of us doing whatever we could to work on housing, and it's not a unified voice with goals and metrics. And so that's what the last sixteen months have really been, is writing this RFP, getting it out, getting proposals. And it was very competitive. We got the results back earlier this year. We had about six people, six organizations that put in a bid, and we chose Housing Innovations Group, which has about twenty-five years of experience working on just this, housing strategies for cities. And they were the lowest bid as well, at about ninety thousand. And so what we want to do is really work on not just having goals, not just having a housing vision, but really working on having goals and then metrics where we can tell if we're actually achieving what we set out to do. I will say that the housing strategy is above and beyond what we are required to do as a city. You have your comprehensive plans, you have your housing needs assessment. But taking this step to do a housing strategy and really drilling down just on housing shows your commitment to housing in this city. So I'll let Rachel or Clint clarify a little bit about where the money is coming from. But I just want to make sure you understand, this is not just another plan. This is really taking the comprehensive plan, which is that big vision for twenty forty, and then telling us how to get there, starting right now. And it's taking that vision and assigning responsibilities, tasks, and keeping people accountable for what they do. So pass it over to Clint.
Yeah, just kind of echo what Susan had said. So when the city was awarded the Community Development Block grant disaster recovery money, funds for supporting the recovery from the tornado, part of that funding was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that would go towards, I think, resiliency planning. And so we have used that for plans such as the housing study. And as Susan kind of alluded to, you know, we have a housing study, and what I think, a lot of people think that is, is how to solve the housing problem. But really, it's really kind of a housing inventory and a housing, kind of a, I think the word I'm looking for there is basically, what is your problem? So it identified where we have, where the gaps are in housing. It did provide some generalized recommendations. And I think, you know, staff recognizes that those were based on kind of the best information they had, but it didn't pull in a lot of the community stakeholders that work on housing. And working with Susan through the Furman Institute, I think it was, you know, I kind of shined that light on that gap, I think, in the housing conversation of, well, we know where our issues are, we know where our gaps are. But what we don't have is a really well-thought-out strategy for how to tackle those problems. Who's going to be the individuals and the groups leading the initiative? Where the funding's gonna come from? And specifically, yeah, what does success look like? What are we gonna say when we get to the endpoint? And when we evaluate whether we've reached those goals? And so that's, that was, I think, the impetus of looking at the housing strategy. And that did, like Susan said, come straight out of that work that we did with the Furman Institute. So that's a little bit of that genesis from that. I think we've been looking at this for probably a year or so. We have spoke, I think, at Public Works in Planning earlier this year about the housing strategies. We'd mentioned that that was also something we'd been looking at, to look at things such as housing inspections and other components of the housing kind of tapestry. And we had put that up for our RFP, and I think it did come back, and we actually had to republish that. So it's kind of been maybe a little bit stalled since we've gotten to this point. But it's something we've been working on, I think, for upwards of almost a year now. So if you have any, answered any questions on that, though, if anyone has any.
Senator Allers.
Thank you for your presentation. So all the houses that we've passed, usually with a ten-o vote this past year, is that factored into whatever this housing study is gonna be? I mean, because we're hitting on every size house. I'm not sure what this study's gonna gleam out of it. I mean, is it gonna dictate of certain times that these houses have to be built in? Is it gonna dictate the size, the cost? I mean, because, you know, we're, the one that we're gonna look at again is gonna have three different price ranges out there on the west side. You know, we have duplexes going up, private, you know, because our housing study five years ago said we needed small to big. So I think everything that's come through the council's hit on all that. What will this study tell us any different from what we're doing in the city right now?
So the lowest price point that I've seen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that so far is proposed to be built. And that's about eighteen-hundred dollars a month for a first-time homebuyer to be able to afford, once you talk about getting the PMI and everything else. So that's not exactly affordable housing in our area. You'd have to have about seventy-five thousand dollars in salary to be able to consider that affordable. So I think what this strategy is looking to do is to take all those things, which are great, because you're right, we need those things as well. But it's gonna look at what else do we need? Who's gonna be responsible for doing it? How do we get there? How do we put all the pieces of the puzzle together? Because it's more than just that type of housing, it's more than just affordable housing. It's all of them. But we have a lot of housing groups that can participate and be able to help. And we want to figure out how to do it, the best way to do it, who's responsible for it, who needs it, and really pinpoint.
First thing you need is land. So is that, is that cost, the price of trying to find land around here? Because on the east side, there's very little land from fifty-four east to do all that. Second of all, how do you convince someone to sell that land to make the affordable housing? We had a couple of proposals come through the state that got denied for affordable housing projects in Jeff City. And I think, I think it was a ten-o vote for us to support, and I think if they come back, we'll do that again. Because the people that are building them are outstanding citizens. I just, I just have a, you know, I don't know what the metrics are of all of this, and to digest it going forward, I'm not comfortable with a, until I, you know, a more comprehensive plan on who's gonna be in charge of what part of enforcing it, how we're gonna go about who's gonna be in charge of it, and things like that. And then the ninety thousand dollars, if we just heard with the financial report, that we're, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars below. below projected revenues coming in. So that's also kind of a thing that's, I'm sitting back here, you know, I don't know where the, and they said there's a fund that's going to be created for the, whatever, disaster relief. I just, I'm having doubts about it, but I just, you know, I have just so many questions about everything that was being, is being presented, that I'd like a heck of a lot more information on this before the council proceeds.
Councilwoman Allers. Do you want to respond?
Yes, again. So I understand what you're saying, but essentially, that's what it's going to do. It's going to help answer all those questions for you. It's not going to dictate who does what. It's going to be a collaborative project to where all the people are coming to the table and talking about what do we want to do? What can you do? What can you do? What can you do? And how do we get there together? Because it has to be that all of us are working together, and it's not just a bunch of different silos of people working on housing. And so it's going to be public forums to talk about it, it's going to be talking to stakeholders, it's going to be all of us working together and saying together, this is what we want for housing in our community.
Is that what we're doing right now?
I don't want to be rhetorical, but I think that's what, I mean, the focus of the city council, I think we all are looking at. We went behind the eight ball for 10 years on getting anything built, and we all, I think, all 10 of us, and even the previous councils, realized that, you know, just about anything that comes before us, please start building, because we know the spot we're in. So I just wanted to know how this would benefit the council's actions, like, you know, come before us with a proposal through the appropriate committees, and I think even all the other committees, just planning, zoning, and everybody else is like, sure, we'd love to hear it. So, I mean...
So again, it's not a plan. It's not going to be so-and-so is going to build 10 more affordable housing units. It really is taking all the plans and taking those visions and breaking it down. And so we're not going to be, it's not that we can come to a different committee and say, we want to build, you know, 240 houses over on here. It's really going to be looking at the whole entire picture and creating a strategy on how all of us get there together. It's more than just building, it's about preserving housing stock, it's about tenant protections, it's about renting, there's a whole gamut when you're talking about housing. It's not just about building new construction.
I appreciate your answers, thank you.
Councilwoman Allers.
So I think people are confused because they think it's another study, and we've been studied and studied and studied. But, so, when the studies have spelled out our housing problems, that's pretty much well-known. But what you're discussing today is the actual strategic plan. How do we actually, what specific steps do we need to take, and who needs to take them, et cetera? So that has been lacking, I think, was exactly, you know, who's on first? So I think that's the whole purpose of the strategic study, is to accomplish that. As to the funding, as I understand it, that's money that's just sitting there right now that we can't do anything else with but this or something very similar to it. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct. So it was awarded through that CDBGDR allocation, and so it is specific for that resiliency planning, and it has to be used for that.
So this is not a new budget item or anything like that? Okay. Thank you.
Pass my cap, Peter, and then pass my answers.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your presentation. I agree with Councilman Pramus. We just want to make sure that the study kind of lay out for us exactly who's doing what in this. It seems like it's been a lot of work, based on your history you've provided us. And my concern as well is that we just want to assure our constituents that this money is not funding that would take away from us. We're preparing our streets and doing what we told our residents that we would be doing. And is that what I'm hearing, is that this is specifically allocated for this, and it would not take away from that area?
Correct, yes. If this money isn't spent towards something along these lines or similar, it'd be money that we would then, you know, not be able to use and would go back to CDBG in the future.
Thank you.
So two questions after that. You said it, and then the proposal said it. Pretty well, it looks like we're just taking all the plans that we already have and making a new plan to read those plans.
No, not a new plan. Taking what we've already...
A plan that says how to use those plans.
In a simplified form, yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess this would be for you. If, this is just, if it happens, if it doesn't go through, or we don't spend the money, like, it sounded like there's absolutely nothing else? I mean, I just looked up resiliency plans, I didn't know what it meant, but it sounds like there's some other things we might be able to do, I don't know, or is there just absolutely nothing in the money, you'll turn it back in?
Yeah, I mean, of course, staff would continue to look for opportunities for doing resiliency planning, whether that's housing or some other endeavor. So no, we would not allow that, as much as possible, to go back ahead, at the end of that term. We're always going to be looking for opportunities, and this was one such opportunity.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wyckel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this is approved and the strategy is developed, who implements the strategy?
So that's one part of figuring out on the strategy, is who's going to be the lead housing entity to oversee everything.
I think that was a big part of the strategy, is trying to identify maybe that either lead organization or lead agency that can focus, I think, more intently on just housing here in the community, and maybe that's council, maybe it's an additional task force, but I think it's using this group to come in and say, based on your resources that you have, who's best suited to be the individual, or be that group or organization that can implement that strategy? And of course, there would be, you know, feedback in the council, there'd be some sort of oversight, I'm sure, there, but I think that lead agency part is a big part of the strategy.
So basically, just a steering committee?
Something similar to that, yeah.
Because if there's not somebody in town that's already able to do that, it's, can we create one? Is there one that we can do?
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. This maybe is a question for staff. On the CDGBDR Planning and Administrative Fund, what is that fund balance?
I don't have that number right from the beginning. I don't know. Existing or the total that we were allocated?
Existing that this would take from.
$250,000.
So we haven't spent from the 25?
No, we haven't, so, excuse me, I think I may have missed that, said that earlier, but yes, so $50,000 was the original allocation.
Thank you. So after spending 90, we would have, what, 160 remaining for that fund that I'm sure staff is working to identify other actionable things we can do.
Yes, we...
There are arreals that are on those funds. Is stormwater one of the resiliency items that we can develop, some sort of similar strategy to, you know, stormwater is, is this what you do for housing?
It could be. I don't know if that's anything that we've discussed recently, but it might be something that could be eligible for those fundings. I don't, yeah, we'd have to look into that.
Do we have a stormwater strategy? Sorry, I do this kind of randomly.
Yeah, it's a requirement of our MS4 permit.
MS4, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Allers.
So, greatest respect for you and your work, and everybody's work in the community. I really appreciate everything that you're doing, and we know how critical it is. Can you tell me a little bit about how do we know this will align with the city's goals? For the most part, this money is coming through the city. So it is our responsibility to make sure that the money is being used in a way that aligns with our goals and is fiscally sound, those types of things. So how do we know that this strategy will align with our goals and what we're doing?
So when you take the 2040 plan, comprehensive plan, it's the broad vision, right? It tells us where we want to, where the city wants to go and be by 2040. Expanding housing options and affordability, updating zoning, supporting infill and mixed-use development. It has one metric, one metric in that whole plan on housing, to increase the share of housing units affordable to households, earning 80% of AMI or less. So in that plan, that's the city's one metric, to see if we're successful. But it doesn't include a list of who's responsible for making progress, it doesn't have a timeline or a schedule for implementation, it doesn't have detailed policies or programs, it doesn't talk about where we can get funding, it doesn't talk about coordination across all the different housing groups in town. And so that's what the housing strategy is really going to do. It's going to take that big vision, and it's going to bring it down to that level to say, who, who will do it, what will be done, when it will happen, and how success is going to look like. Because housing, we have a lot of people in our town that are hurting because we don't have housing. It is an important, important aspect of our town right now.
So my understanding is that the strategy will be developed with us, with us, with us.
Absolutely.
And because I have the advantage of being part of that Furman workshop, and part of that, we looked at a number of cities and their housing strategy and how they implement it. And, yeah, I can, I can know deep in that, how, the value of it. These studies, they look at how you marshal resources in the community to enhance your housing, to build new housing, and land and infrastructure and things that you can do to put it in the direction and meet goals, set, part of it is setting, how you would meet those goals. And so it's got a lot of different aspects to it, as housing does, as we all know, it's not a simple thing. So anyway, it's, to me, it's, it would help us tremendously. We know we have maybe 500 more units that are in works, but what's the next 500 to 1,000 or more, you know, five, 10 years down the road? This is a strategy to get us moving, so we get 2,000 or more people.
Councilwoman Allers, thank you. Councilwoman Aller.
Oh, I just want to say, for the record, that I will be voting in favor of this. The questions that you all are asking is exactly what this is supposed to do, is answer those questions. And that's all I have to say right now.
Councilwoman Aller.
And I appreciate, I'm really glad to hear that it can't be used on things like our streets and those types of things. So we know our poor infrastructure, it probably couldn't be used on, other than for resiliency, which could possibly be used on some of our, like, infrastructure and the, like, our stormwater and that type of stuff. So just know that for me, $90,000 is a lot of money for us to spend, so I sort of have to think about it before, you know, I can, but I do totally appreciate what you're doing.
So we do understand that $90,000 is a lot, but when you're talking about the long-term longevity of our, of our housing plan for our whole entire city, you spread that out over five years, 10 years, 15 years? And, and since the money can only be used for that, it's important. And I would just want to reiterate what my Councilman Lester said. This is not a housing strategy, just coming in and just developing it. He's going to be working with city staff, he's going to be working with all the stakeholders in town, he's going to be working with J.C. Rep., he's going to be working with everybody who has anything to do with housing, and the people in our city who are affected by the housing. It is a coordinated effort for the whole entire city. It is not just one group wanting to do this. This is for the benefit of the whole entire city, and hopefully with the effort and participation of the whole entire city.
All right. Thank you, Furman.
Thank you.
Great, that takes us to Item 9, Announcements. Councilwoman Allers, Admin Committee.
I'll be, this one's the oppoium.
Councilwoman Wyckel, Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. It will be on the first day. Well, Budget, it will be 5:37 on the 1st. The Finance Committee will meet the day before, on the 20th at 4:00.
All right. I think that's a good segue that people need to remember, the Budget Committee, you can pop up on your calendars saying... Councilwoman Joe, Public Safety.
Yes, our next meeting is August 28th. Everybody, please come in.
Public Works, Councilwoman Aller.
It will be a week from Thursday, August 14th at 7:30 here in council chambers.
All right. So we head as far as announcements, takes us to Item 10, Consent Agenda. Is there an intention for any items to come up for the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to see and put it in front of the Admin Committee.
We have...
I was going to make the same motion.
We have two to take it off, so Item C will come up for the consent agenda. Any other items coming up for that? Let's go ahead and dispense with the items that are left, and on the consent agenda would be Items A, B, and D.
Move your group.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, you now have Item C in front of you. Councilman Camp either, do you have additional comments or action for that?
Yeah, I'd just like to move it back to the Admin Committee. It sounds like there's still several questions, maybe, that need to work.
I think the question was, is it being referred to the Prop Committee?
So generally, generally, this type of work is, besides the Pub Works and Planning Committee.
Are you comfortable with that change, or you want to go to Admin?
Yeah, no. I'd like to see it stay at Admin.
Your motion is for the item to go to the Admin Committee, is there a second to that? Okay.
I'll second that, that's good.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for Item C, the Authorization of the Contract with Housing Innovations Group. Go back to the Admin Committee for further review.
Do you mind the second?
Second, and taking it off of the consent agenda. Or you didn't really second, you were the second person to...
My fault.
Councilwoman Joe.
So I want to make sure I understand before I vote. So with it being off the consent agenda, if this motion fails, then what happens to that bill?
Councilman, maybe decide whether you can approve it, you can put it on a formal, you can just table to a future meeting. Councilwoman House.
Actually, to that, Mr. Mayor, who's sponsors of removed consent agenda bill?
It would be...
Well, this isn't a bill. This is a, this is a consent agenda item, so it doesn't have a sponsor. It would be sent back to a committee, generally, the chair of that committee would be the sponsor.
Can I inquire? Um, Councilman, why are we doing admin instead of Public Works if it normally goes to Public Works? That's what I'm not sure about. That's what... That's what...
It's, it's an administration of a plan. It's my thought. I mean, yeah, you might be able to put it in Public Works, but just because it has housing in it, it's the only reason I feel like it would go to, it could go to Public Works. I think it could go to either one.
Councilman Allers, then Councilwoman Young.
Just to kind of agree with, uh, originally about the, uh, come through admin because it is requiring a contract, uh, with the city and if there are, with several things brought up, I have a few more questions and I probably have some questions that would, after, if it would pass through the admin to send it to Councilman Lester, who, uh, Public Works and have some questions about housing and some different options, if we could use that money for it. At the present time, I think admin's a good place to ask the pertinent questions about the contract and the nuts and bolts of it, since we just got it here and I'm, I didn't read all ninety pages right off the bat. I'd like a little bit more time to look it over.
Councilwoman Young.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm in support of this bill, as, as already been mentioned, but I do hear what, uh, Councilman, um, Cam Peter and, um, Allers has saying about the contract portion of it, as a member of the admin committee, I see advantages of us being able to read through it and discuss it. However, it would be my next plan to make sure that it goes to Public Works at that point.
Councilwoman Neel.
Thank you. I thought in staff's presentation, it was said that this went through Public Works?
So we had, I think, mentioned it in, uh, in, when we were reviewing, I think, some of the, uh, the DR programs that we were doing. So it's not something that we put in front of Public Works and planning with a recommendation to go to council, but something we had kind of been keeping them, I think, abreast of as we were going through that process.
Is there, from a staff perspective, is there a, a time component to this?
Uh, in so much that, you know, we've gone through the RFP and we do have an individual that I think is, is perhaps waiting on the decision on that contract, that would be the time component. As far as the actual study itself, um, you know, of course, there is a timeframe on the DR money, but I don't think that's something that would come into media play. I think we have a little bit of time, so if there's a short delay, I don't think that would, that would, uh, be an issue, no.
All right. Seeing no other comments, you have item C in front of you with recommendation to refer to the admin committee. We will call it.
Allers.
Hi.
Allen.
Hi.
Ozelson.
Hi.
Job.
No.
Cam Peter.
Hi.
Lester.
No.
Michael.
No.
Neely.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Young.
Hi.
Five-five.
Matt, go, aye. So six-five, it will go back to admin committee. You guys take a look at it. All right. Takes care of consent agenda, takes us to item eleven-A, Bill's Introduce, twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two-six.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one-dollar agreement with Schneeter's Excavating Company for the stream bank stabilization tributary to Gray's Creek project.
Good. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This contract authorizes, uh, the construction of stream bank stabilization for a wastewater line. It's actually a main that serves a good portion of the city, uh, at the intersection of Highway one-seventy-nine and Boonville Road. Uh, it will involve putting, deepening the line and providing riprap and other, uh, stream bank stabilization techniques on top. It will have a side benefit of also stabilizing, uh, cuts in the creek in addition to protecting the sewer that is currently exposed.
All right. Seeing no questions, thank you. Item twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two-seven.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MODOT for public transit operating assistance.
Thank you. This, this bill, uh, will allow us to receive, uh, the state operating assistance grant agreement, uh, grant in twenty-twenty-six with MODOT. Uh, that agreement is approximately, sorry, I used my glasses, is approximately forty-five-thousand dollars for the new fiscal year. It is a fifty-fifty, uh, state grant, so we will come up with the match. It is an operating grant. It is something that we use every year.
All right. Next, item twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two-eight.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the calendar year twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. The proposed or the, the mayor's proposed budget for FY twenty-six has been prepared based on the property tax rate of zero-point-fourty-six for the general fund and point-oh-nine-six-one for the fireman's pension fund, for a total rate of point-five-five-six-one. Public hearing for this will be on August eighteenth at the council meeting. Council would then be asked to vote on this and, um, I am required to file this with the county clerk's office by September first. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Aller.
How long have we kept this rate? Do you know how many years it's been this way? And it's just for information. I know we get this every year that we have to submit... I just wanted to...
If you want to go back here, I can go back.
I just wanted the public to know how long it's been.
It's been that way for many, many years.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two-nine.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, finding that the area described as a two-oh-eight Marshall Street redevelopment area is a blighted area as defined in chapter three-fifty-three of the revised statutes of Missouri, as amended in that the redevelopment of such area is necessary and in the public interest, approving a redevelopment plan for such area, approving a grant of real property tax abatement, approving a development agreement, and providing further authority.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. This bill would approve a redevelopment plan under chapter three-fifty-three Missouri statutes, um, which includes a plan for redevelopment, a finding of blight, and a, uh, approval of tax abatement, specifically, Grayson Manor LLC is looking, uh, to construct, uh, or, sorry, renovate a building in two-a, two-a, two-oh-eight Marshall Street into a twenty-five-unit building, residential, uh, units. The tax abatement that is being contemplated, uh, under this redevelopment plan is a seventy-five percent tax abatement on real property, and that's that on the increment. So that's the, uh, increase in real property, um, that is a result of this project. Seventy-five percent tax abatement over the first fifteen years and fifty percent tax abatement over the next five years. Twenty years of tax abatement, two different rates. Typical, or, sorry, not typical, but, uh, tax abatement under chapter three-fifty-three allows for a hundred percent, up to a hundred percent, uh, tax abatement on real property for up to twenty-five years. Uh, so this is, uh, below the maximum that is available under cheap, uh, chapter three-fifty-three. An estimate of project costs is between, uh, two-point-five and two-point-seven million dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Well.
Thank you. First of all, thank, uh, Councilman Michael for sponsoring this. Ryan, is this the only one in the city that's applied for this? Has this been brought up before other councils?
No. Uh, three-fifty-three is a fairly, fairly common tool, uh, that, uh, the city's used. Three-fifty-three was approved for, um, the Strikers redevelopment, um, after the tornado. And then also, it was approved for...
Simonson project.
And there's at least one or two others that I appreciate being on top of my head.
It's been brought up before, uh, the previous councils, that we've looked at those different properties and the information for the general public. I just wanted to make sure that this is not, you know, this is not something we haven't discussed before. Uh, we've actually talked to, I think we've brought this up before about this gentleman, but we've run into some problems in that area on some timing and a bunch of other things with the, I mean, with, it's Capital Avenue he was looking at, so, um, uh, you know, I think with our strategy of what is capital and all that looks, this and this comes down around that, I think this is a well worth, uh, worthwhile project that we, we look at. And I know that, uh, Simonson, I think, was, is something else that, that is coming up or that we have yet to...
That's already been approved.
Yep.
Yeah, that's been approved.
This was the other piece of the thing that he was working on, I believe.
Yep.
Thank you for the information.
Sure.
Councilman Thomas. So I drove by this property on my way here this afternoon and it looks pretty done. Are we incentivizing something here? What, what's the logic?
Sure. So city and Mr. Drury, um, along with our partners, that was J.C. Rep. and County School District, have been kind of working on this, talking about this project for several years. Uh, so this has kind of been in the works. The city assigned a preliminary funding agreement to work on this tax abatement program back in December of last year. It's not uncommon that developers, uh, would not delay starting construction and kind of undertaking the costs that are associated with delay, uh, while working on these projects, certainly. It is, uh, you know, more ideal if you can get these on the front end, but then you kind of have to do the balance of, uh, you know, costs and, and issues that are associated with delaying a project, um, you know, in order to get the, the tax incentive through the process, um, as opposed to try to get it on the front end. This is primarily TIF, which has a but-for determination. Um, chapter three-fifty-three does not have a but-for determination, so, uh, the way I always like to describe chapter three-fifty-three is, it's a very, very flexible tool, uh, for city councils to, uh, you know, support projects that they feel are worthwhile. I can tell you that this tax incentive is being, uh, kind of contemplated in the financing for this project. And, you know, it's certainly the city council's prerogative to support or not support any issue like this that comes in front of them. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is, this is, I wouldn't say that this is something new that's now appearing in front of the city council. It's been in the works for at least eighteen months.
On this particular project.
On this particular project.
So, uh, this is a tax abatement.
Yeah.
So that means that it's less tax to the city.
It's, it's, so, so that's... No, depending on how you, how you think about the problem. And so, so the way chapter three-fifty-three works, it freezes tax in a moment in time. Actually, what it says is that it's the year before the three-fifty-three corporation acquires the property, um, that the successor freezes the tax. And so all previous property taxes that were collected on that property, um, you know, previous to the development, continue to be paid, um, going forward. And so there isn't a reduction, um, in the amount of taxes that this property would pay, you know, to the city, the county, the school district.
So it's just abating for the improvements?
Yeah, for the improvements that are made, uh, to the property. It's providing a partial tax abatement and it, that's, that's where it gets to seventy-five percent for the first fifteen and then fifty percent for the last five years. The tax abatement is on the increase in value due to the improvements.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. That item twelve-A, Bill's Pending, twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-four.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a preliminary, preliminary PUD plan and preliminary subdivision plat of the Ridge subdivision for property located at thirty-nine-twenty Country Club Drive.
Minister Smith.
Thanks, Mayor. So, uh, if you recall, we had the public hearing for this item, uh, at the previous council meeting, so, uh, I'll give you just a really brief overview of the project. Uh, so it is zone PUD, so this is approval of a preliminary PUD and preliminary plat, so, uh, there would be a final that would come back in front of council in the future. Uh, it is for the development of, uh, an additional street, which would include six, uh, townhome-style, uh, residential housing units with one single family along, uh, the west edge of that property. Uh, they had, uh, requested, uh, a deviance from the sidewalk requirement for their new stub that connects out to Country Club Lane, uh, that would not connect to any other sidewalk within that area. So, uh, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, about any more details with the project.
All right. Seeing no questions, you have twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-four in front of you. We'll call it.
Allen.
Aye.
Ozelson. Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Hi.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Will Passos.
All right. Twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-five.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final sub, final PUD plan and final subdivision plat of Wildwood Estate subdivision, section one, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Minister Smith.
Uh, yes, so, uh, this is the, uh, actual final PUD, final plat for the phase one of Wildwood Estate. So just kind of a quick overview again, uh, extension of Wildwood Drive, uh, the city and county is working on for extension. This property would take access, uh, from that drive, so really a, I think, a direct result of some of that infrastructure improvement that the city is putting into this area. Uh, real quick, so you could see, and I think I misstated it originally with twenty units, actually twenty-four units, so also twelve kind of, uh, houses, uh, structures, residential structures that are configured kind of in that townhome arrangement, so something a little different than the single family, which we've seen, uh, recently as well. So, again, a couple of examples, I think, of some of that housing that we've seen, uh, kind of perpetuating through, hopefully, uh, and will continue, uh, through the city here going forward. Uh, and this one, uh, the, one of the particulars of that is that this would be, uh, private infrastructure within that development. So private streets, private maintenance of those streets, but also including a gated access to that property. Uh, that again would be located there, uh, at the entrance there to future extension of Wildwood Drive. Uh, this one did have some renderings, uh, associated with that, not that this would be the exact final design, but to give a, kind of an example of what might be expected for that development. Uh, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing none, you have twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-five in front of you for a vote.
Ozelson. Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Ozelson.
Aye.
Will Passos.
All right. Twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-eight.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, establishing re-appropriatable accounts that allow for the ongoing utilization of sale of asset proceeds from the sale of surplus or retired vehicles to be applied toward future payments for the fleet leasing program.
All right.
This bill would establish essentially re-appropriable accounts that would allow us to use as a mechanism any of the sale of asset proceeds from sale of surplus vehicles or retired vehicles and apply those funds toward future payments for fleet leasing vehi, fleet leasing program. Uh, this would really only apply to vehicles that are currently in the fleet leasing program. Uh, it's the program that we use here with, uh, departments, as opposed to purchasing vehicles outright. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing none, you have, uh, on twenty-twenty-five dash zero-eighteen in front of you.
Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
All right. 2025-019.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate sale and development agreement with Jackson Street Q O Z LLC for property located at 212 Jackson Street.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this one and the next one is two of our properties that were included in our East Capital Avenue redevelopment program. This is several properties the city had to acquire in the past from a previous owner and has been going through the process of putting these back into productive use along Capital Ave with so far some success here along this corridor. As you can see from the, from this illustration, vast majority of the properties that were acquired have now been awarded to new owners, hopefully seeing some new development along that corridor in the very near future. Now, the one we're discussing presently is 212 Jackson. So, this is a property located here along Jackson Street, just south Commercial Way. Did have a structure on it previously, but was demolished. That project would call for the construction of at least two residential units on that property. I think the representative from the ownership might be here tonight. No, I don't think so. So, they did bid on that property. As stated in the memo, the purchase price for that would be $8,400. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
What do we pay for that lot? Right over.
Don't have that in front of me. I do know that figure was the amount that was listed on the appraisal that we received for all the properties. But as far as our purchase price, I don't think I have that at my fingertips. But we could get you that information, I think.
And then, just checking, I mean, I know we're most of the way through these, these properties as far as approving development agreements. But if, if ownership, if somebody wants to, they get a development agreement with the city and they want to sell that property, the, is it true that the redevelopment agreement transfers to the new owner that they can sell?
I think that's my understanding. That's the way it's structured, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, and then I guess with, if somebody were to sell, the redevelopment agreement transfers and it would be with a new owner, I guess, could their due process come to the city council at any point in time with an amended, I don't know if it's due process, didn't mean to say it like that, but they could come to us and ask for an amendment or a different development plan, those types of things?
Yes.
Thanks.
Counselor Houseman.
I'd like to inquire, Councilman Mealy, what was the reasoning behind your line of questioning?
There was a comment last week about the potential of the sale of one of the properties that we've approved. The comment was from staff that there might be a transfer of properties.
Very good. I was just curious.
All right. You have 2025-019 in front of you.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Hazelton.
Aye.
Job.
Aye.
Will Passos.
All right. 2025-20.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate sale and development agreement with 526 Octoplex LLC for property located at 528 East Capital Avenue.
Minister Smith.
All right.
Mark Two.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just moving down the street, just to the north and the east a little bit is 528 East Capital Avenue, currently also vacant property. So, the redevelopment agreement with that would allow up to three units. I think the original proposal was two. Talking with the developer to that site, they think they can actually perhaps get a third unit in there. So, it's construction to allow up to three residential units on that property. The purchase price for that would be $24,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Cam Peter.
Uh, this goes back, I guess, for both of them. I'm just waiting to them. Is there enough spots for parking approved? So, that would be six parking spots on that property plus the three plugs?
Correct. Yes. The, the original development plan had, I think, six parking spaces located on that site or whatever the minimum was to meet that objective. But I think with the on-street allotment that allowed you to lose a space there, I think they'd have enough onsite and on-street parking as well.
I just know in the, hmm, Marshall Street, right, Marshall. Yeah, 208 Marshall and their packet, they said it's, they were going to use some parking from 528, one in purple, blue.
Yeah, 528.
528. And then the other one, they also have some more on East Capital.
Well, 528 would be new construction, so they would be required to meet the minimum amount of parking required.
Yeah, but in that agreement, it says they're using some parking from 528. So, I was just making sure that it's not, you know, the two spots aren't using it for the same thing just to meet.
They had excess spaces on that side. If they did go to two units instead of three, they may have excess spaces. So, that might be what they're referring to.
Hazel.
If I remember correctly, we had a revision of the parking requirements in our P and Z code like last year where we reduced it to one and a half spots.
Correct. Yeah. So, that probably gave them a little more flexibility with their designs there with that house.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. You have 2025-020 in front of you.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Hazelton.
Aye.
Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Will Passos.
All right. And then 2025-025.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, calling for an election to renew its license tax of 7% on hotel and local accommodations.
Come on.
Thank you. This bill would place in front of the voters a renewal of the city's lodging tax on the November election. So, currently, the city's lodging tax, 7% lodging tax, is set to run through 2035. This, sorry, I'm trying to pull up the correct information here. This, uh, this bill would renew that for additional 25 years, extending until 2030. So, currently, 4/7 of the lodging tax is devoted to the development of a conference center and 3/7 is utilized for the continuing operations of the convention and visitors' bureau. So, this is being pursued, at least in part, so far in advance of its, of its eventual termination in 202035 in relation to the city's current conference center project. City's bond council and underwriters for that project identified that if the city were able to secure the continuation of that funding for an extended period of time beyond 202035, that the city would be able to realize the much more advantaged interest rates and terms on borrowing against that tax when pursuing bond financing for the conference center project. And then, of course, this would also secure funding for the city's C V B, Commission of Visitors Bureau for their operations. The Commission of Visitors Bureau is dependent on this funding for, for their operations just day to day. So, and dual purposes here. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing none. You have 2025-025 in front of you.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Hazelton.
Aye.
Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Will Passos.
All right. Item 13, informal calendar. There's nothing on the informal. Item 14, resolutions. Item eight, resolution 2025-15.
A resolution of official intent of the council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, for the issuance of the city's taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount of approximately $45 million to finance a project for the benefit of Modine Manufacturing Company and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Thank you. So, this resolution would direct staff, its bond council, and J.C. Rep. as the city's economic development contractor to pursue work on a Chapter 100 tax abatement program for a project of Modine Manufacturing Company at its existing facility at 1502 South Country Club Drive. As the clerk indicated, they are looking to add 65,000 square feet to the cust, cust, sorry, the company's existing manufacturing facility and then acquire certain types of machinery and equipment and other personal property to fill up that 65,000 square foot addition. It's, at this time, this is a $45 million project that's currently being contemplated. And so, the kind of logistically, what would happen? City staff, bond council, J.C. Rep. would work with representatives from Modine to kind of finalize and work out the details on this deal to provide tax abatement for this industrial expansion. This would come back in front of the city council for approval, for final approval as a bill. You know, generally, these things can run anywhere between a couple of months to, you know, up to six, seven months. I think Modine is a little more aggressive, I guess, on timeline than other projects that have taken longer. But that's kind of the basics of it. This would come back in front of the city council in its final form. This resolution is just instructing staff to go ahead and work on this and, you know, kind of pursue this opportunity with, with Modine. I, as I said earlier, Ms. Ibaneau with J.C. Rep. is here. I think she'd be able to answer any more specifics on the question other than what I covered. But with that, either myself or Ms. Ibaneau would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Michael, would you like to get this on the table and then we can address any questions there might be?
Please place this on the table for us to go forward tonight.
One second. One second. Can we all add this?
I heard Lester.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions. Councilwoman Ellen and Councilwoman Thomas.
I want to say how excited I am about this. And I don't know if, Missy, if you were going to speak a little bit about it. But I know this is a great opportunity for the city. And so, I don't know if you can give us just a little bit more about how exciting this is for the city?
I was hoping that somebody would ask me a question so I could talk more about this really exciting topic.
You would just identify yourself and then you are welcome to share exciting news.
Very good. Mayor, city council members, my name is Ms. Ibaneau and I'm with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership. And we do come before you this evening to talk about an existing business opportunity that, like you said, Councilwoman Ellen, that is very exciting and impactful to our community. Modine Manufacturing has been a member of our business community since 1979. So, a very, very long time have they been committed to their employees and citizens of the Jefferson City, Missouri, community. They are a global leader in thermal management technology and solutions, including data center cooling products such as high-efficiency chillers, advanced indoor air systems, liquid cooling technologies, and global service network. So, while Modine is not a data center, they provide products to their data center customers. And in response to this very high-growth demand for U.S. hyperscale data center customers, Modine will be making a strategic investment in the Jefferson City facility in both real and personal property, like I said, in Jefferson City on the west side of town. So, this will include, as Ryan mentioned, new machinery and equipment and new construction of approximately 60, 65,000 square feet onsite. And they do currently reside on about 50 acres. And so, they have some great expansion opportunities at their site off the South Country Club Drive. So, this investment will enhance engineering and product development and create approximately 200 new jobs. And not only will they create new jobs, but also will support the deployment and retraining of existing employees. So, as Ryan stated, we are still working out kind of the final growth plans directly with the company. But supporting this project as they build out the growth plan will reinforce our commitment to Modine as they grow in our community for generations to come. So, we are thrilled about this opportunity. It's not very often that we get to work expansion projects with this size of growth. And so, just anything that we can do to support them in their efforts, we are happy to do so. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Do you have additional?
I just want to say thank you so much for your work and I appreciate the community's support. 200 new jobs is amazing for Jefferson City and the surrounding areas. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas.
She stole my question and you answered it very well. And thank you for your support on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Allers, then Councilwoman Ellen.
Thank you for your presentation. The, the whole J.C. Rep. is, as much as they've taken Jeff City under their arms and, and found growth opportunities with Unilever and Scholastic and all the things you've done over the years, it's really great having people like you in that position that are pushing for growth and, and making our community a, a, a lot better with diversification of manufacturing. And what we also have as the state government and, and all that in our local, of county here, in Colton County. And it's exciting news, 200 additional jobs. But the only thing you have left now is to get Hitachi to expand and then you can take some time off.
Councilwoman Yeo.
Missy, thank you for that information. I just want to say I'm personally, for personal reasons, I'm excited about it. My husband does work for Modine and he is excited about the expansion. And I want to mention that because, you know, it's one thing for us to be excited, but when you're a person who's working for the company and you're equally excited, that means that it's some good coming out of this, right, for many reasons. And so, I just look forward to seeing what happens next. He gave me an hour tour of the whole plant to show me what it's going to look like and what's going to be changed. And so, again, I was just excited that he was so excited. And the other workers around in the building as well were excited. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilwoman Mealy.
I'm just going to make a comment on the new housing. The fourth ward's really booming.
Yes.
Our new housing is within a mile.
Yeah.
Yes, around the corner.
It'll pair very nicely together, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a great example of how decisions weave together to build upon each other.
Build upon each other, exactly.
Other comments? Let's get to voting. You have resolution 2025 in front of you. All right. You have resolution 2025-15 in front of you for the roll call vote.
Mealy.
Yes.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Upstane.
Allers.
Aye.
Ellen. Hazelton.
Aye.
Job.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Resolution 2025-16.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson's transit, transit division, Jeff Tran, to execute a fall tripper route promotion.
Mr. Fitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is to allow the student fair to be, to go to zero for the first semester of the school year. And the purpose of this is, we have seen a noticeable drop in schoolchildren using the tripper routes and especially the younger children on, using these routes. using the tripper routes and especially the younger children using these routes, and we've got seven thousand dollars budgeted as our revenue source for the tripper routes this year. We've only saw two thousand dollars worth of passes sold as of now, so it was a fair increase a while back, and it appears that the fair increase may have gone a little too high, and we're trying to assess the, the demand for it outside of, demand for tripper fares outside of the fair price. We are allowed to run a promotion from the FTA, Federal Transit Administration, for six months, so this will be within that, within that window, and any schools, any student is eligible to use the pass all the way up to Lincoln, and so, that's basically where we're at and what we're trying to do from the transit standpoint.
Councilman Lester, would you like to get this on?
Yes. I've moved to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five sixteen.
Second. Got a motion, second. Now, questions, comments? Councilwoman Allen?
What's a tripper route?
A tripper route is a route set up by, by the Transit Division to run for schoolchildren and outside of the normal routes. There, my understanding is there, the Cathedral has the gold route running by it, but it is the only one that consistently has a route running by it at an appropriate time. So, the tripper routes are for, set up to run at a specific time in the afternoon and the morning in order to provide regular bus transportation for children that need it. There, there's a combination of both people that are too near a school to run with a new one-mile radius. It reduced our demand in the past, but there's still a demand there for this, and we're trying to assess what the current demand is by doing this for, for passes for children. Actually, I know it goes all the way up to adults attending the university as well.
Do we know, like, fiscal impact for us?
No, I do not know fiscal impact. It'll be, we've only collected two thousand in the first semester of the past year, up till now, from fiscal year to now. We've only collected two thousand dollars in this account, and so, I would anticipate it would be less than two thousand dollars.
All right. Seen no other comments?
Just a comment. Just a comment. I was fortunate in junior high, seventh through ninth grade in San Antonio. Back then, the schoolchildren, at least to my school, and a number of schools used this public transit. And I just thought it was great. It was, you know, after, after football or after sports, in terms of us, in terms of us just going to school and just introduction, introduction to public transit, I think, for kids at a young age is great to do. I'm looking forward to this.
All right. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen.
Thomas?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Allers?
Yes.
Allen?
Aye.
Hosselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lycel?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to grant an airshow agreement with the Showme State Airshow Incorporated.
Mr. Fitch?
Thank you. This, this resolution would authorize the, the airshow agreement for twenty-twenty-five with the Showme State Airshow. The city has been participating with Showme State Airshow for the last number of years to bring an airshow to Jefferson City after the Columbia Airshow is no longer available. And this year's show will be September twelfth through fourteenth, with September twelfth being a dinner for veterans and the thirteenth and fourteenth being the airshow proper. It would run from nine a.m. to two p.m. both of those days, and we recommend that it be agreed to.
Councilman Allers, would you like to get this on the table?
Mayor, thank you. Yes, I'd like to lay this resolution before the council member's consideration.
Second. Councilwoman Allen had a second. Did you have a question, Councilman Thomas?
More of a comment, if that's allowable.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, this would be in agreement, and after talking to Mr. Fitch earlier, this airshow is going to bring in between twelve and fifteen thousand people. Whether God's smiling on us, and so, we're basically creating a city within a city at the airport for a few days, and we've got a lot of coordination's got to happen on parking, public safety, transit, et cetera. So, Mr. Fitch is really interested to get this signed, sealed, and delivered so that they can start working more seriously on all those issues and get, get all the planning done. So, I encourage a positive vote.
Councilman Young?
I just want to say that last year was very good turnout, not thoroughly informed. My question for this year, because it's not really clear what I'm seeing, last year you had exhibitors there. Will they be there that Friday and Saturday or just that Saturday?
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
They'll be there Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
The Friday night is a, is a dinner for the veterans. I forget where it's, that's right.
So, Friday is basically a practice day. A lot of, a lot of our aerobatics and whatever, the military aircraft that's there will be arriving then, and we'll be doing a practice airshow. It's not necessarily open to the public, but if you're there, you will see it. And then, there's the dinner that night. So, I mean, it's, so it's a practice show Friday, and then it rolls out for Saturday and Sunday, the twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth.
Did you have a comment, Councilman Hosselton?
Oh, I just wanted to say I, I attended the, the dinner last year, and that is not to be understated either. Our very own General Strothman here from WORP One was the keynote speaker there. I don't know if it'll be this year, but it's definitely worth checking out that dinner beforehand.
Councilman Allers?
That was a very well-run. I took a grandson over there, yes, last year, and it was, like you said, Derek, it's very well-run operation, a lot of people over there. It's really a, a great event for that area over there. I remember as a kid going over there a few times when the Blue Angels and all that came in here, and the thunderbirds came through Jeff City back in the old days. And so, I have a fascination and a love for airshows and airlines and all that. My father worked for T W B, he knows our airline, so that place is near and dear to my heart.
And I think, as the councilman indicated, Ms. Smith will be here at the meeting on the eighteenth and kind of give you some additional information about it. She apologized she could not be here tonight. All right. Seen no other comments. You have twenty-twenty-five, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen in front of you.
Young?
Yes.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hosselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lycel?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Abstain.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting the C D V G twenty-twenty-five Annual Action Plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Smith?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Strothman from our Neighborhood Services Division. She's going to talk a little bit about the action plan and some things that are in that, and I'll let her take it away.
You can just identify yourself for folks at home.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Ann Strothman. I am a senior Neighborhood Services Specialist within the Department of Planning and Protective Services, and thank you for having me tonight. So, this is our twenty-twenty-five draft annual action plan for our Community Development Block Grant Program. And so, this is under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and so, their goals are to provide decent housing, create a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities. And then, we also have to follow three national objective requirements, and that is to benefit low and moderate-income persons and eliminate some in blight, meet urgent need, which is the threat to health and safety. So, for our citizen participation and timeline, we set out a digital survey in April that ran through, April eleventh through May second, and then, we also had a public meeting on May sixth to discuss those survey results. And then, this afternoon, we had our public hearing for the draft plan, and of course, tonight, we are bringing this toward, to you, and then, our action plan is due to HUD on August fifteenth. And so, the priority needs, activities that we may undertake are the down payment assistance program, our rehabilitation program, public infrastructure, demolition of dilapidated structures, historic preservation, and public services. And funding for these activities will begin January one of twenty-twenty-six and run through December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-six. And so, for our, these are the activities that we can go ahead and undertake. Of course, the administration, twenty percent is set aside from our annual grant allocation, and that amount is four hundred eleven dollars, or two, I'm sorry, two hundred sixty-four dollars, two, two thousand, sorry, two hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred eleven dollars. There we go. Got it out there. Staff implementation of eligible activities, and then, we also have the down payment assistance, the homebuyer education, and our rehabilitation program, as well as the infrastructure projects, demolition, public services, urgent needs, and historic preservation. And this is what we are actually here for, is to give you our program and our budget. And as you can see off of that, two hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred and eleven dollars, twenty percent of that has to come off for administration, and that is at fifty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty cents, and then, all of these other programs that we have budgeted. The, just to kind of, for the infrastructure project, we are going to be doing kind of a sidewalk and a ADA kind of ramp rehabilitation for the community center on Lafayette Street. And so, right now, that is in environmental review, and so, once that is finished, then we can go out for bid, and I don't know whether we'll start construction this year, but it will also fall into next year as well. And then, public service urgent need, that is just set aside in the event of a federally declared disaster, and historic preservation, and then, there's the total four of that. And so, the draft plan was made available at the Office of the City Clerk, at the, at the library, the El Puente Hispanic Ministries, and the Public Housing Authority, and then, it was also out on our website during our thirty-day public comment period, which actually ended yesterday with the public hearing being today. And so, again, written comments were accepted through August third, which was yesterday, and as of today, no comments were received. And so, at this time, that is my contact information, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Would you like to make some comments?
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
All right. Now, questions, comments? So, Councilman Allers, then Councilman Thomas?
Thank you for the presentation. If there are, under the, oh, my lord, a hundred thousand dollar, what, infrastructure improvements, curb and gutter, or curbs, sidewalks?
Sidewalks and an ADA ramp for that project.
Is that determined by you, or can, like I said, if I noticed a problem in the first ward, could I submit that to you for review, or how does that mean?
So.
How does the process work for finding out where that goes?
Right. So, this project actually came through our Public Works Department, and because the, and I wish I had a picture of, you know, of, of the project, but the ramp going up into the building is very steep and the sidewalk, you know, as well. So, so they are really just trying to, to kind of make it a little bit easier for folks to get in, and I also believe that when Lafayette was redesigned through there, they took out parking, and so, I believe this will take parking, yeah, this will also add some parking spaces, plus I believe there will be kind of a handicap parking space there as well.
Thomas?
So, I noticed that the affordable housing portion, you had five houses, five people?
For the down payment assistance, is that?
I don't know if you can get back the slide up?
Go back.
Five households for proposed outcome for homebuyer assistance, okay. How, how are those five households selected?
So, they go ahead, and we have applicants that send in applications, and so, it's a first-come, first-served. And so, typically, in the past, we have, we have really assisted more households, but because of kind of how we're budgeting everything, we could do more than five households as well. I will say that our rehabilitation program has really taken off this year, and that, we actually increased that threshold from five thousand per household to thirty thousand. And we had a lot of, of HVAC requests, you know, to replace furnaces and, and air conditioner units, and five thousand dollars, our homeowners would be paying a whole lot, you know, over and above that. So, this really helps out those homeowners as well.
I understand. So, so you take applications for those five households. Do you know roughly how many applications you get?
So, last year, and even this year, we received, we, we send folks through the homebuyer education course before they go ahead and apply to make sure that homebuying is an option for them. And so, out of, my goodness, maybe ten of those, right now, I maybe have had two homeowners actually go through the, the entire process and receive assistance for that. So, so sometimes it just, sometimes it now is not the right time for them, and so, so they wait until, until it is, but then, they have that homebuyer education course out of the way for that, if that answers your question.
And your homebuyer course is, is a different course than, say, for example, Habitat? Does that know Habitat does for?
Yes, so they have to go through an online course through E-Home America. We go ahead and we set that up for them and pay the, the online registration fee, and it is an online course, and then, once they are finished, then they actually need to meet with a housing counselor from Love Columbia. And we actually do have a contract with Love Columbia for homeowners, potential homeowners to be able to do that. We did have a contract with Catholic Charities here in town, but they had to go ahead and suspend their housing counseling program and put those funds towards a different avenue there, so. And Love Columbia is really good about just meeting with these folks over the phone, basically.
Okay. Thank you. So, I was trying to get to, you know, roughly how many applicants you have for those five households, which is fine. I just want to point out that for Habitat, they had three houses that they could build coming up, and they had over two hundred applications for that. And when I think about the housing strategy thing, and I know that's a dead topic for now, but the need is there for housing, you know, and I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Yes, and that is very true. There is a really big need for housing. Yes, are there any other questions or comments?
All right. Bridget?
All right. Thank you.
All right. You have Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen in front of you.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hosselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lycel?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Item sixteen, re-businessed, there were none. Item seventeen, unfinished business, just one item you should have seen in your packet. There was an issue discussed at the last meeting. I did some additional look at it. I put a fairly comprehensive document in the packet, my reasoning for vetoing that bill. It does take a process from this council, so I may ask our attorney to discuss. We need to get a motion on it. There was an issue discussed at, uh, last meeting. I did some additional look at it. I put a fairly comprehensive document in the packet. My reasoning for vetoing that bill. It does take a process from this council, so I may ask our attorney to discuss. We need to get a motion on the table.
Sure, so it's actually not a...
Everybody is comfortable with what they're putting out.
Yeah, so it's actually not a motion. It's a question that is automatically posed to the city council in the event of a mayor's veto. Charter says that the, uh, presiding officer, who in this case is the mayor, shall put the following question to the council. Shall the ordinance take effect despite the disapproval of the mayor? And so, a yes vote would override the mayor's counsel or the mayor's veto. And the ordinance would go into effect. A no vote would, um, allow the mayor's veto to stand. And the ordinance would not go into effect. Happy to answer any questions fairly new process forms.
Councilman Miller?
I guess I have a question about the, the veto itself. Was, I believe this came from a business, the, the original request came from a business downtown, was the, upon your determination to veto, the bill was the business contacted that, initially asked for the change?
I have not contacted them. I think someone in the process has. I mean, there was a comment back that the request wasn't specifically for that business. It was for a spot that that business felt like, you know, would be advantageous to them. Subsequent to that, I heard from several people saying, wow, I'd like to request the same thing. So, and that led into my discussion.
So, did we con, did anyone contact that business after we approved that?
I have not talked to them until council takes an action. Then my intention was, either way, is to contact them.
I, I, I could just say that I think when it wasn't signed, we proceed with implementation.
My only concern was, and I, either way, really, uh, my only concern was, you know, it's in Ward 2, I hadn't heard about it until, um, until we got the information. But, uh, I just wanted to make sure everybody was happy. You know, I didn't want somebody who thought we had voted on something a few weeks ago to be upset to find that. So, that's why I asked the question that I asked.
Don't know if there's anything we do that everybody's happy on, but I laid out the reasons. And as I've indicated, I've gotten other questions from Ward 2 that, well, I'd like to do this too. And I said, well, it just fascinated me that a couple items above, we had made the move toward hiring a parking company. I served on traffic and transportation and public works. We've got a hodgepodge all over our city. And it just feels like this is the time to hit a reset button and make sure before we put one more in implementation. Councilman Allers?
You kinda just stole what I was gonna say. I, we, we just had discussed about the, looking at the whole picture of our city parking thing. And I think I may was probably the only no vote at last week or two weeks ago on it, just because of the fact we are gonna look at the big picture of Jefferson City. And to, and to do this right off the bat and to say we have to come back as part of the new plan and the way we look at things and to have to redo this, I didn't think was, uh, a, a, a good judgment at the time. So, uh, I will be voting to uphold the veto.
I think, uh, it was, uh, really, uh, I think you were maybe asking, did they tell the other business that it was approved? After Ryan said, I don't think it was ever officially approved because it wasn't signed. So, I don't think...
Right, but if they were watching or something, you know what I mean?
I'm got you, yeah.
Somebody went and told them or, you know, I guess there's some...
I was just making sure, yeah.
They could find out, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I, I understood that nothing official, but...
I wanted to go ahead and second, uh, Councilman Allers, uh, upholding of the veto. And I wanted to also just reiterate, you know, it also seemed very unusual for the disposition of a single parking space to come before this body. And, I mean, it makes sense, you know, after we looked into it as to why it didn't make sense to do that at this time.
Councilman Lester?
I'll just say, I heard from a, the business, uh, in that same block, just asking, you know, if you did that there, why wouldn't I do it for, why wouldn't you do it for me and some others? I think it could be a problem.
All right. If Mr. Mona, if you would just clarify to make sure everybody's comfortable how your vote will rest on the question.
Sure, so the question is, shall the ordinance take effect despite the disapproval of the mayor? So, a yes vote would override the mayor's veto and allow the ordinance to go into effect. A no vote would support the mayor's veto, and the ordinance would not go into effect.
All right, we're gonna do a roll call vote?
Hosleton?
No.
Joe?
No.
Cam Peter?
No.
Lester?
No.
Michael?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Young?
No.
Allers?
Nope.
Alan?
No.
You can stay.
All right, that takes us to item 18. During the going to close, we'll ask Ms. Thompson to read, and you got the petition that was added.
The chair will entertain a motion during the public session pursuant to section 1602 or revised statutes of Missouri. Going to close session to discuss the following, attorney-client privilege, section 1, and negotiated contracts, subsection, subsection 12.
And I've moved, I've moved to the...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I moved that this... And that we're going to...
You've done protocol there. Second is...
Joe? Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester? Michael?
Aye. Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye. Say what?
Yeah, we all did.
I don't know that we need...